He's asking if you're ready.
Hopefully not.
Yeah, I think, are you ready?
Yeah. You're live, Keith.
Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Brian Card is absent with notice. Verga Lawrence?
Here.
John Sarantopoulos?
Here.
Matthew Wendorf is absent with notice. Michael Huko?
Here.
And Keith Thurlo?
Here. And we're adding Michael as an active member, voting member tonight. Okay. Special permit application number 231308. The Kraft Group, Big Y Foods, landowner, 70 Waterigan Road. We're going to continue that. They asked for that continuation. So that'll be next meeting, July 17th. All right, and zone text change, application 231309. Michael Chabines, if I say that right?
Yep.
And Jessica O'Brien. Allow for wedding event venues in the RD and LD zones by special permit. Edits, if any, may be suggested and made to the proposed text up to the close of the hearing. There'll be no further advertisement for those edits. Somebody want to speak to that? Mr. Tebow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Norm Tebow, Killingley Engineering Associates. I'm here representing-
Oh, excuse me, Norm.
I'd like to excuse myself.
Okay, yeah, he's with the family, friends of the family, so we don't have to confuse him. So we still got to call him just for the right three?
Yep, three, yep.
Okay, great.
Sorry.
So I'm here representing Michael Chabines and Jessica O'Brien this evening. And what you have before you is some proposed language to be added to the Killingley zoning regulations based upon a workshop that we had with the commission on a previous meeting. So we did, we did discuss this. I took in some of the suggestions, well, pretty much all of the suggestions that the commission put forth. And essentially, what we're proposing to do is to create some language within the regulations to allow this use because currently there really isn't any language in there. And the use, as you know, if it's not specifically listed in the regulations, then it's assumed not to be an allowed use. So first of all, under definitions, we have events/wedding venue facilities. And that would be a facility or facilities open to the public where weddings or events shall take place. And then we are actually proposing the permitted use with a special permit approval by the commission, this wedding event/wedding slash event facility, subject to Article VII. And we are proposing this in two different zones. It'll be in the LD and the MD zones. First of all, item A, this, well, this will be under section 410.1.2. And we're going to call this 410.1.2Q. Item A, under that, statement of use. A statement of use shall be submitted describing in detail the nature and scope of the event/wedding facility and the maximum number of attendees proposed for the site. B, lot size, and the language here is, was modified based upon the discussions that we had last month. The minimum lot size shall be a compliant lot in the zone that it is located in. Item C, access. The facility shall have access from a state, municipal, or private road. Item D, attendance. The maximum number of attendees per facility should be based upon available parking and applicable fire code requirements. E, use separation, outdoor event. Wedding areas and reception buildings shall be located a minimum of 200 feet from any residential building on adjacent properties. Parking areas shall be located a minimum of 100 feet from the street line and a minimum of 150 feet from any residential building on adjacent properties. Item F, event hours shall be limited to between 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. Sunday through Thursday and 10 a.m. to 11 p.m. Fridays and Saturdays. G, health department. The event/wedding facility shall require approval from the state and/or local health department as required. H, noise. Music for any event reception shall take place indoors. If a temporary tent is used for the indoor space, it should be classified as a quote-unquote "soundproof tent." Only low-level background music may be allowed outdoors during the ceremony. Noise at the property boundary shall not exceed 45 decibels at the property boundary after 10 p.m. per section 22A-69-1.1 of the Connecticut general statutes. I, lighting. Lighting shall be certified dark-skY compliant and shall not bleed onto adjacent properties. J, traffic safety. All highway entrances to the site shall be designed to ensure safety and ease of access to the public street or highway, taking into account grades and line of sight for vehicles entering and/or exiting the site. All access and egress driveways from the state roads shall be approved by the Connecticut Department of Transportation. K, onsite parking. Shall be provided at least one space per three attendees plus one space for each staff member or employee. Permanent parking surface shall not be required. And what I added to that was off-site parking may be permitted, but parking is not permitted in the public right-of-way. And I also added, after our workshop, a permanent parking surface shall not be required unless it is a handicapped accessible space, in which case shall meet the requirements of the Accessibility Act. Item I, excuse me, L. To minimize impact on adjacent property owners, the commission may limit the maximum number of attendees, limit event hours, and limit the number of events per week or event days, and may require increased setbacks, screening, and buffers. And lastly, signage. Facility signs shall meet the requirements of section 540 of the zoning regulations. So that was, that was for 410.1.2. We have the exact same language in 410.2.2. So I'd rather not just go through all those items again. It is the exact same language, just for a different zone. So, as I said, you know, based upon the workshop that we had and the input for the commission, you know, these, the language for this particular use was put together accordingly. So I hope you find it favorable, and obviously, we're open for discussion if any other questions you have.
I mean, two things jump out at me, Norm. Number one, the traffic safety from state roads shall be approved by the Connecticut Department of Transportation, and it seems we should add, you know, permit by the town of Killingley.
Sure.
So that-
We could add that, approved by the Connecticut Department of Transportation, and something like driveway permit shall be obtained from the town of Killingley.
For local roads.
For local roads.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the other one, I hate to leave it wide open on onsite parking. My concern would be if you have, if it ends up being an event every weekend, would a grassy site be something that you'd want to have there?
Well-
You know, it's-
Right, well, I've done, I've done three other, I've done, I've had three of these event facilities permitted in other towns.
Okay.
And two of them, the grass surface has been sufficient. One of them, they were having difficulties with it, so what they ended up doing is putting down a stone dust surface, which-
Something.
Which needs to be, you know, maintained once a year typically. They'll regrade it in the springtime, but that's worked pretty well.
I mean, it seems though it isn't something we would really need to say, but-
Right.
On the other hand, if it ends up carrying mud out into the street and you've got cars stuck-
Absolutely, absolutely.
No good for them either.
And that's the parking surface. You know, in my opinion, the access driveway should be, you know, minimally, at least a, something like a stone dust surface.
Well, the town probably-
And I think, and I think the town's going to require that anyway.
They're probably requiring-
The town is going to require a paved surface going, you know, in and out of the facility itself, so. It, I think it just, it would be in the best interest of anyone coming in for a permit for this particular use or, you know, a public hearing for this use that if they're approved and they start having issues with, if they have a grassed surface and it gets muddy and people are complaining about it, then obviously, I think it's in their best interest to make that modification, to make it more amenable to their patrons.
I just, I just know we've been through this before-
Mm-hmm.
In some of these residential projects. And it's been us in the butt where, next thing you know, they've got six-inch bony gravel out there and it's, you know, it's an access road still.
Yep.
People-
Right.
They didn't do anything like they were supposed to do. We spent time on it and it never happened. So, I mean, it's like, yeah, I get it. I would think it would be logical that they would do it, take care of it themselves.
Right. Like I said, I've got two of them that they have grassed surfaces, and in the summertime, they're having two or three events a week. You know, you know, the client that I'm working for, you know, and I know this, this regulation can't be site-specific, but I know, I think what happens is when you come in with, with an application, a formal application under these regulations, I think it's going to behoove the applicant to demonstrate to the commission that, you know, what they're proposing at the time is going to be sufficient, and if it isn't, then it's certainly within your purview to have the town monitor it, or if the applicant or the permittee has a situation where it makes it difficult for their patrons, then it's really up to them to address it. And certainly within their best interests if it's going to impact the business.
Right. Is there anywhere where it has approval by a fire marshal or a review?
I think under the, under attendance, it says maximum number of attendees per facility shall be based upon available parking and applicable fire code requirements.
I think, because the tenting, every time they rent tents, they usually have to have fire marshal approval for it, they would inspect the tent.
Mm-hmm, yep.
So, I don't know if you could just mention that. I think that's pretty standard.
I mean, we could add, we could certainly add another sentence to that, and applicable fire code requirements, and then followed up by, each facility shall be approved by the fire marshal, something that simple, I think.
Yeah, that's all, just, and that's the only reason I say that, because I know they have to inspect the tents, so.
So they're going to be there anyway?
They're going to be there anyway, yeah.
Right.
So. Commission, is Berger anything else, any comments?
No.
John?
No.
You guys are so simple and easy tonight.
Well, the workshop makes it easy, I think, you know, coming in here-
Yes.
And speaking to everyone preliminarily-
It's a big help.
It's a big help, absolutely.
Can I ask staff?
Yeah, I would want to add on to that sentence for, about the fire marshal. So each facility shall be approved by the fire marshal and subject to inspection, annual inspection or inspection, something along that. It kind of, it goes without saying, but it's nice to have in the regulations. One of the notes I had written on this pretty early on, and I'm not sure where we would fit it in, maybe even with understatement of use, but a provision regarding the adaptive reuse of old halls, meeting houses, old churches, former agricultural buildings, kind of being the preferred type of structure versus maybe that over new construction. But I'm not sure if that, how the commission felt on that.
My reaction, you know, just off the top of my head is that we have an economic development commission, and I think that if there are structures around town that would be suitable for that, then they could play that tune. So, and let people know, you know, that if you're considering something like that, why don't you go look over there? You know, rather than, you know, do construction of a whole new building when something could be a-
Right, right. And I, no, I mean, from an economic standpoint, too, the adaptive reuse of, of an existing structure makes a lot of sense because to build something, you know, of this magnitude, whatever it is, if it's 100 people or 200 people, whatever it happens to be, obviously, there's quite a cost associated with building from the ground up.
Right, and it's also, individual buildings have individual interesting aspects.
Correct.
You know, and I think that if you promote them or, you know-
You may have someone who's got a carriage house on their site, and they want, and they can fit 30 people in it for like, you know, baby showers or something of that nature, you know?
Yeah, the ambiance.
Yeah, there's an ambiance there.
Yeah.
You know, someone else may have a barn that they can fit 150 people in. So I think every, every facility and any building is really going to kind of dictate itself. You know, I know I've been speaking with my clients on this for probably five or six months now going through this, and, you know, originally, they were saying, well, we want to have 200 people at these things. And, you know, and I, and after discussing with it and kind of looking over the area that they'd like to go, I just said, it's not going to work. You know, you can't, you can't expect to have that many people. It's just, you're not going to have the parking, you're going to be crowded. I mean, one of them that I got, I had approved, I did Stonehurst at Hampton Valley in Hampton. We were permitted for 299 people, and the reason why 299, because 300 requires sprinklers, so. So they were permitted for 299 people. They have, they have had one event where there was over 250 and decided that never again. It just, it wasn't functioning correctly. It just didn't work, and most of their events are somewhere between the 150 and 200. And that's where it works best, and they find that, you know, people can move around better, the tables, the tables sit better, you know, people have room to just roam around the facility, roam around the grounds. So it's almost kind of a, I don't want to say a hit-and-miss thing, but, you know, you can, you can go into it certain expectations, and, you know, hopefully, you know, my experience doing this, you know, talking with my clients who are looking to do this, is going to kind of get them off on the right foot, knowing that, you know, they're not going to be able to put 200 people here. It's just not going to work, so.
So Jonathan, what you just quoted, reuse of existing structures. Is that not allowing people to put up a new structure at all, or?
No, I didn't know if they're, because it's special permit and there's some leeway for the commission, like kind of direction for the, in the future, to say it's kind of preferred. You know, I think of some of the older churches or even like the Grange buildings or what have you that maybe are going to look for a second life in the future. And maybe it would make sense that they, you know, the Grange is a meeting hall, is an event center, and something could be said for, you know, grandfathered in use, but maybe-
Ideally, I think that would be great, but on the same token, you know, I hate to leave it, if you've got the Yacre Ridge and you want to do it, you should be allowed to do something else anyway.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's my take. Anything other, anything else?
No, staff had a comment about the previous workshop, but that's been addressed, so with the updated.
Anybody from the public want to speak to this application, one way or the other? No? Okay. Nothing else, one more time? John? Okay, do we want to close this public hearing? Make, have a sound?
I'll make a motion, close it.
John makes a motion to close it.
Second. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or abstentions, none. It's closed. Thank you, Norm.
Thank you.
Okay. Unfinished business, special permit application 231308. The Kraft Group, that's continued to July 17th. Zone text change, application 231309. Michael Chabines and Jessica O'Brien allow for wedding event venues in the RD/LD zones by special permit. Do we have a motion at all?
Is that, is that application what?
Yeah, we were just doing with Norm, yeah. Wedding venues.
Okay.
Is this a text change? Is this a zone text change? It's not the actual one?
Yeah.
Which, Mike, I think you were recusing yourself from?
Yes.
Yep. It's from unfinished business, so.
But we don't already have text, right? So the motion would be-
This would be the text, unless we're going to wait until he makes revised text. This is the text that we are voting-
Okay, are you going to provide us with revised text?
Yes, I mean, if you wanted to.
Put it off till then?
Well, I prefer if you, if you approve it conditionally with the added text that we just discussed. I wrote it down.
Okay. I'll make a provisional motion to say okay to the zone text change application 23-1309.
With the amended, with the-
With the amended language.
Yeah. Do we have a second? Second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
John Sarantopoulos?
Yes.
Verga Lawrence?
Yes.
And Keith Thurlo?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. New business.
Norm.
Zone text map change, application 231310, town of Killingley. National flood insurance program. FEMA flood maps.
So, so for tonight, we're mainly looking to schedule the public hearing. These are updated flood maps are, and language that we received from the state, working, Amory worked directly with the FEMA agent for, coordinator for the state of Connecticut to get our updated language. Eastern part of the state, it was kind of the first one, getting updated maps. Previously, our current maps are from 1985 and don't have a lot of identified elevation points. These updated ones give us a lot of base flood elevations throughout, which is a nice thing. The town as a whole, when you're looking at these regulations, are very important for mortgages and flood insurance. If a town doesn't adopt this language, it can actually be an item that can disqualify someone for a mortgage or insurance programs in relief. So that's why most towns, I think every town in Connecticut adopts these and why we currently have them, but it's looking to do updated ones. For next month, because we're just scheduling, next month, we will be getting you guys the copies of the updated maps and everything like that we have in our office, but not to scare you, there's a lot of them.
Okay, so I'm going to just, you know, go to make a motion to receive and schedule a hearing for July 17th for zone text and map change application 23-1310.
Okay, you have a second?
I'll sign it.
Any further discussion?
Yes. Will we be getting a comparison, you know, where you'll be able to show us the changes that they've-
The main comparison in terms of the language is identified. That's with you guys tonight. As for the maps, I can look to bring our existing maps versus the new maps, but I don't know if that's a, I don't know if they featured that. We reviewed these first before COVID. As staff and at the local COG, we went through all the maps. I know of at least one or two areas that really did change, and we can go over those kind of one by one, but for the most part, not huge changes. I know off of Valley Road, there's some houses that are very excited that they're not going to be in the flood plain anymore. They've been waiting for these. There's some changes kind of around where our sewer plant is, as well as off of Pineville Road. There's some areas that were in flood plain that aren't in flood plain anymore. But the biggest change is the, they've gone through and given us more data, which is very useful for applications.
Okay, John?
Yes.
Anybody else? Okay, all in favor of scheduling for July 17th?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, or abstentions, none. And the same for Barbara Danielson, application number 23-1311. Receive and schedule for public hearing July 17th.
I make a motion to approve that.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? All right, subdivision application 23-1312, Nathan Vander Swag, 134 Putnam Road, GIS map 15, lot 3, approximately 16 acres, real development zone, to subdivide property into two lots for family purposes. It already had received its free split. Receive and schedule for public hearing on action for July 17th, 2023. We, we don't have to have a public hearing for this one if you guys don't want to, but it's up to you guys, whoever makes the motion.
That's because it's a family subdivision, so that there's certain requirements and exemptions with the fam, a family subdivision where they don't necessarily have to give, to open space and whatnot, provided that it truly is for that. There's a time period, I believe 10 years in terms of like sale, that would prevent or penalize them in the future, where they might have to come back even. But being that it's a family split, they're allowed to, we don't have to do a public hearing.
So, so then the town staff has a way of remembering for 10 years? You have to be paying attention to this thing?
So, so there's language that we put in the land record with the approvals, in theory, right? And on the maps, and we can go as far as asking for language to be put onto the deed itself for the, for the property, because a new deed will be created with the subdivision. Those would all be items that we'd be talking about as like conditions.
Okay, but as long as these things don't-
For approval?
Yep, still be moving it to the 17th for approval, yep. So, but it's a question of, do we open a public hearing or do we just deal with it as old business?
Up to you guys, I don't care.
I don't care.
I'll make a motion that we just move it for approval to the 17th, without the public hearing.
Second.
Which is, what is it, 23-1312.
Right. So we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, none. Okay. Application 23-1313. Town of Killingley proposed easement, access easement over a portion of real estate located in Owen Bell Park, 580 Hartford Pike, GIS map 114, lot 43, Village Commercial. It's just an 824, so it's just to show either support or you don't support the easement that's in the map, in your packet.
Aye.
Proposed project that is becoming to us.
This thing? No.
Yep. You should have a, you know, you should have a map like this in your packet.
All right.
It's a proposed project. Next to Jewish B. Savins, across from the commons, across from Bell Park.
Yeah. I'm not going to sweat it.
Anyway.
So, the, so the easement, go ahead.
Okay.
So the, thank you all, this, the developer came with a proposal to put a rear access road that connects to, through the accessway and parking lot area of Owen Bell Park for this development. We, at staff level, reviewed this. Our number one highest priority is public safety and the safety of the participants at the park. So one of the things that we looked at for requesting of them in the development of this is you'll notice along where the park, the main parking lot is for the park, there is a little square, if you will, up along that driveway area. That's to narrow the throat of that driveway, to make it really just be space for, for, you know, incoming and outgoing traffic. That really helps to define it to become a four-way stop. It's a, it would become a full four-way stop right there, right at the entrance at, yes, yep. The gate that's currently located at the bottom of town, at the entrance of Owen Bell Park by Town Farm Road would get relocated, that gateway would be relocated. They would install two gates, one for the upper parking lot and one for the lower- one for the upper parking lot and one for the lower parking lot, so those could be closed off as the, as the town deemed necessary, but not block that accessway. We really were looking at recognizing what we believe is going to be traffic flow. They still have to do their traffic study and all of that. Development itself has to come before you. But predominantly, this would likely be access for those that are exiting that development and trying to get to the light at Town Farm Road to take a left. There are certain times of the day that when you're exiting the, even Jewett City Savings Bank, you try and take a left out of Jewett City Savings Bank during the day and you'd be hard pressed to take that left and it can be quite dangerous. So allowing for that access point to the rear and bringing them to a signaled intersection would provide that safety.
So that's not the street that's across the street from the entrance to the mall?
Yes, it's right at Killingly Commons. This is the light at Killingly Commons.
Okay, and so that light is already controlling what's happening on that little street, right?
On Town Farm Road, yes, it is. It is. So it brings that, that traffic largely that are going to be exiting left. So there are exits, but, you know, for the development to still go out on one oh one, so it's not the primary exit. One of the other things that we discussed with the developer in creating this access point is we recognize that there's going to be a lot of people. There are three restaurant locations that are proposed in this development. It would provide an attraction for those that are utilizing the park to come and, you know, have easily accessible food or beverage at the park. And so the Board of Recreation did review this in full detail and they approved this unanimously with the condition that sidewalks are added to that easement area and additional crosswalks, which the developer has agreed to do. They are not reflected quite here on the map yet. They were in the process of doing that. So we, we felt the Board of, the Board of Rec felt that this would be addressing the safety concerns that they had. It would also actually narrow that intersection, create a full four-way stop intersection, which would actually provide higher public safety than what is currently there because right now there is no stop for those that are trying to exit the park. And there's more than one entrance, if you will, to the exit portion of the park and that can be challenging. It also would funnel pedestrian traffic better into the park as opposed to some of the pathways that they're using right now. It would provide more controlled access to that point. So the request is for an approval of the eight twenty-four to proceed forward. In order for this conveyance to occur, it still has to go to in front of the town council for consideration and they would be setting it to a public hearing and then ultimately it goes to a special town meeting because it does have property rights with regards to that. So town meeting is what actually approves conveyance of this easement. But I think it does balance well the, the goals and initiatives of the P O C D with between balancing development as well as safety and keeping our, you know, parks and open space accessible.
Any thoughts, anybody? Jewett, I got one. Jewett City has agreed on their opening?
So Jewett City has not. They only reflected that there to be able to show kind of full, you know, what could potentially be the full opportunity use of it. I don't know how much conversation they've had with Jewett City. Jewett City may never open that rear part. But they did want to reflect it just because it is a possibility of use if that were to be, if that conveyance were to be there. They did, the developer has, would convey this with the responsibility of full maintenance of that easement from Town Farm Road all the way up through to their development in perpetuity. So they would have to be responsible for all paving repairs as well as plowing and maintenance throughout the, throughout the winter.
Okay, so that looks like there's entrances in the front?
As well.
Yes, there is.
And, and the back is either in or out?
Correct, correct. And really, that's really to address the, so the front portion, you'll notice on that development does have a right-hand turn only further down, you know, on the western side, yeah.
On the western end.
Yes, and that's really to address because the sightline is very challenging right at that point because one oh one starts to curve and so the, the access point gets challenging. So that would be a right-hand turn only. So typically, if somebody is coming through here, especially with the drive-through component, they're gonna wanna drive in and drive out, right? So they're gonna come in and largely they're gonna take a right heading out on one oh one. That would be, you know, we as people that are driving, we typically take the path of least resistance and so, and the quickest way out. So that's largely where the largest volume of your traffic is gonna go. It's gonna come in and it's gonna go out that right-hand turn. This is really to address or provide alternative exiting options for those that are maybe taking a left-hand turn and wanna get to that traffic light to take the left-hand turn as opposed to trying to take a left-hand turn out of the other, out of the other two-way entrance.
You mean this thing?
Yes, yeah.
But it make, for safety's sake, if it were me, and especially if I had a kid in the car, I would just go back out that way?
Yes.
And go, because here's, there's a light here, right?
Yeah, and that's why they really wanted to get to that signal. That's why the request for the conveyance of the easement originally came. And, you know, we really scrutinized it very thoroughly at the staff level on all, you know, at all departments. So emergency management, planning and zoning, town staff, engineering staff. We spent a lot of time reviewing that, looking at it from at the recreation's level, all the town events that we have. What are the, what are the potential stumbling blocks? And we really feel that what's being presented here tonight really addresses those public safety concerns that we had. Emergency vehicle access still has full access to the park, so while that's being narrowed at the top, it would obviously still have to be able to accommodate fire trucks, school buses. All of those still have to be able to get in and out of that location safely. And by creating that into a four-way stop right there at that intersection, it actually creates an intersection right there, kind of within that parking lot space and would provide greater public safety by kind of getting the vehicles to stop and pedestrians having an opportunity to cross. So we really did spend a lot of time reviewing this and really talking through what the potential impacts would be.
Any further discussion? Good job?
I'm okay.
So we got a motion on this?
Well, it's a motion to.
Support or not support?
We, we take citizens' comment, right, on these?
No, you were past citizens' comment. This is not that.
Okay, yeah, this is, okay. The citizens', that's at the council level.
Well, the count, no, the council will get it through a public hearing, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Just making sure.
Well, if we deny, all it does is it makes it, they have, forces the council to have a two-thirds vote.
Correct.
They actually vote to purchase it. So our influence is two-thirds vote or not.
Right.
So if you support it.
Right, but I will say, I think that the council would, you know, listen to that as well, just like I brought it to the Board of Recreation because the Board of Recreation oversees Owen Bell. And getting their input on whether or not they felt that this was going to be detrimental to the overall park was important. And so bringing in, and they did support it unanimously after they reviewed the full context of it.
So I have one more question? So, from a driving point of view, I think that exiting this way is the safest for traffic and the people in the car. However, that means that, just like what, kids all around?
Well, not necessarily. I mean, we don't necessarily have kids running around in the, in the parking lot. We do have.
Well, I'm talking about, oh, that's, oh, yeah, that's a parking lot.
It's all a parking lot right through there. So yes, there are, there are children that cross from one, that cross, that currently go from Killingly Commons. They cross one oh one and they go up through, you see it all the time. They cross one oh one with their scooters or their bikes or their skateboards and they cross one oh one and they go up into Killing, and they go up into Owen Bell that way. And they typically do hit the lower parking lot and they kind of go right across that lower, that lower parking lot and all the way up through. And they kind of take a diagonal path to the skate park is really kind of how you watch them walk right now. Introducing this design by adding the additional buffers that come out and creating a more formalized intersection right there, kids are more apt to actually see it as an intersection. There's gonna be stop signs. And so, and it'll actually stop the cars right there at that intersection so to be able to see these kids that are coming from across one oh one. But there's groups that pass, they cross one oh one. It's a lit, it's a lighted crosswalk. They, they cross one oh one right now all the time.
Currently, cars only stop coming in off Town Farm Road, but if you're exiting Owen Bell Park, there's not, there's no stop sign right now. So if you're just speeding through the parking lot right now.
Okay, so is that, that's a problem.
That's a problem.
That's a problem. This would actually correct that problem because it was put a stop sign there and it would make the person stop.
Okay.
So that, that would address some of that internal flow. That is a challenge for those pedestrians.
So is it a test that they have to fence that right away or not?
No, not fence it because we, I really believe that we're probably gonna see people coming from the park walking there. So the request was put a sidewalk along that easement, along that drive so that way people that are coming from the park are actually walking on a sidewalk and then have, you know, crosswalks on the rear portion that aren't currently shown on the map. That's been the request. They've been receptive to that and they were gonna be updating their information for that. So the Board of Recreation did approve this unanimously on the condition that those sidewalks were added to the plan.
Right. Okay, anybody else? A motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve.
To move forward? Support? Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions?
Thank you very much.
Special permit application twenty-three dash thirteen fourteen, CBD, CPD, Killenley LLC, Dominic Carpionato and others. Five thirty-six, five forty-two, five fifty-two, Harford Pike, point nine five acres.
Put your finger on which.
Right down.
Oh, okay.
Point nine five acres, point three four acres and point six four acres for construction of a twelve thousand five hundred eighty square foot commercial building with drive-through and associated site improvements receiving scheduled for public hearing July seventeenth. That is the property we're talking about.
Yep, that's the same property we're talking about.
So this is the same project, just scheduling it.
And you'll get much more flushed out lands.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So we're gonna move that to a special hearing?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
On a seventh date, yeah.
Special permit, so.
Yeah.
So we need a motion to schedule it. It is, it is received. It's already.
Oh, yeah. We got a big box of stuff for you guys.
Okay, somebody wanna make a motion to schedule this for public hearing?
I'll do that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mike? Any further discussion?
I'll wait for the packet.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions?
For clarification, that's the July seventeenth, right? Yeah, okay.
Okay, Towne Killenley Zone Text Change to add more definitions for uses, et cetera, to the Towne Killenley zoning regulations, Article Three definitions, Section three ten, receive and schedule for public hearing also July seventeen. You guys are gonna make out a busy night.
It'll be at the end of the agenda, that particular item, just because.
But there's several items.
Yeah, and we're still going.
So what are, what are we adding to definitions? Just a short snippet of what this is.
This is what we're, we're talking tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yep, that was what we talked about in the workshop.
Okay.
It will be updated, so that way it shows everything that's staying, everything that's new and being changed. And I will make sure that that language is to you guys with ample time. I believe it's ten days before the hearing is when we wanna have, if there's any changes, we try to get all the changes before then and then they get posted with the town clerk again and out to you guys, so.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to move it to public hearing July seventeenth.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions? None? Okay, special permit application twenty-three thirteen sixteen, Snake Metal Club. That doesn't keep the same special permit number from the original?
You know, I had, I had that same question and we did it for filing purpose. It's all together with the original.
Alright, make sure you.
We did it for filing purposes so that way there would just be an updated notice with the revised. But it heavily references the original, yeah. I agree, that's what I tend to do with wetlands. If there's an extension, I keep the same application number, so.
Snake Metal Club Incorporated, five sixty-seven Hubbard Hill Road, Hubbard Road, G I S map two fifty-five, lot ten R D, requests first renewal on special permit for excavation of three hundred and seventy-three thousand cubic yards of sand and gravel on nineteen acres of land. It's basically just to renew the gravel permit. So it's all reported on the conditions?
Yeah, everything is looking good. It's moving forward. Kind of unique one, it has two different kind of competing gravel companies pulling stuff out of there. It's unique to see that. But the phase one and phase two are being, or one is fully restored, the other one, grass is taking hold right now.
So they're on the third phase?
The way that they're doing it, phase three isn't really activated. They're more on like phase four because they found better material. There was, overall, there's just shy of three acres open and that's what is what you wanna do, is stay no more than three and start restoring. So we had the meeting with the State Metal Club president there this morning, me and Dave Capassione. Gave him a little bit of direction in terms of restoration in one area, like the next area is to move forward before they then go on to the next. Dave felt that the existing bond, which is fifteen thousand dollars cash, stays in place and recommended for the extension.
So, was there approved for phases or was it just three?
There's eight phases total, so they are approved as a whole, but they're not supposed to have, so there's thresholds. At three acres and under is what we should be at, like in terms of open at a time. And then you're supposed to restore before you open the next. If you hit five acres, you need a separate permit from the state of Connecticut.
I just don't remember eight phases when they approved it.
Yeah, and we, that was one of the things in the last, the last approval, we had them renumber them because originally it was like phase one, phase one A, phase one B, and they were, you know, had started on phase like six. You know, so they all got renumbered. One and two have been restored. One of the phases, they didn't hit good material, so that's the next one. They're in the process of regrading and restoring, but it's just a bunch of clay.
But they're not expanding it beyond where they originally were approved?
Yeah, it's, it's all the same meets and bounds of the original approval. I do have plans if you guys wanna look at it, but it's no different than what was previously approved and they are following all the conditions of that approval.
Okay, so this is like three hundred thousand plus sand and gravel from nineteen acres of land and that's just what they're gonna do in the next section?
We don't have an updated cubic yard. That's the original amount that they were approved.
Okay, so I, I'm baffled as to how to make a motion on this then?
Just renew.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a three, and it's kind of new because this is one of the updated things we did with the earth rags where the gravel permits, they have to come back every three years. But it's, it's just for an approval, similar to wetlands. If any of you have done wetlands before, after five years, you have to ask for an extension up to another ten.
Okay, so the general question is, so since they have to come back every three years, does that mean that we get a report from staff that they're doing the right thing? Or they're doing something wrong and whack them?
Yep, so one of the conversations that we had with them was quarterly reporting and that's all the gravel permits that are out there have been struggling with during COVID and when things were a little slower, you know, kind of get a pass on that. But that was a conversation with them that we want to see that quarterly report again with them. And it's somewhat informal, it's just an email and that would be correspondence that we could work into the meetings just to let you know where they stand and how they're going. But the, there's all, we wouldn't be. Um, but the, uh, there's all, we wouldn't be recommending for a, a renewal, um, of the permit unless staff had gone out and verified.
Okay, so you want a motion to approve at this point?
The recommendation from staff is to, is to renew.
Okay. So I make a motion to that effect.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Michael? Any further discussion? I think next time if we had something, you know, even a eight by eleven or something like that.
Like the, the original approved site plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, just so we see-
We can see what they're-
Yeah, I do have the folder if you guys want it, but, um-
I'll take any word for it that it's eight phases. It's, it's part of the original. I don't remember eight phases, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that wasn't a- I recall ever doing that big a number.
There's, each phase is only like, uh, like two acres or less. It's, it's really small.
Well, the whole nineteen acres wasn't really that big.
No, it's very narrow for-
Yeah.
A gravel, but they're kind of wedged between them and some water and residential on the other side. So they're, they have a very unique little area.
So going on to the next thing?
No, not to evolve.
No, we have a motion and-
And motion and a second.
A second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose or abstentions none? Okay. Yeah, next time just try to give us more.
Yep.
Adoption of minutes. Workshop meeting minutes, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any more to discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions? Regular meeting minutes, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Motion?
Well, I have to confess, I haven't had time to read either one of them from this takes.
Well, we haven't.
Yeah.
We can disable it the next time if you want.
I know, I'm, I'm not going to worry about it that much. Anyway, um, so make a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions? Okay, well, workshop for the business park, do we need a workshop for that, for the regulations portion?
Uh, the regulation, yeah, we would want to schedule one for next month for the regulations, um, but I, I have no real further discussion on it tonight.
Do you need a motion for that?
If we could.
You can have, I'm about to make a motion.
You've got a lot going on that night.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's up to you guys.
It's July.
I know, I know. Wetlands originally was scheduled for July third.
Well, they've had the whole fall off.
They told me no way. We canceled that.
I don't care. My kid's getting married June thirtieth, so whatever happens after that, I don't care anymore.
Congratulations.
Anyway.
I just don't know if we do-
So do we have a motion?
No, not yet. I'm still thinking. We really need a mo- um-
Well, if, if you think it's too busy of a night, um, we can try to get something together for you guys and we can always submit it. We can have it as an item, um, to submit to you in the meeting as a potential to discuss. You're going to workshop in the course of the meeting.
Why don't we do that? You give it to us as a handout and we'll schedule it for August. We can, or we can schedule it in next meeting for August.
Yep, or perhaps potential to discuss it that night if, for some reason it opens up.
If there's an opening.
Yep.
Doesn't look like there's going to be, but. Everybody content with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Correspondents, anybody got questions about the correspondence? Reports from zoning officers?
I do have something with the correspondence, so the, um, and so we do have correspondence from, uh, Kathy A. Hest. Uh, I think she's here tonight, right? Yeah, she's here tonight. Um, so, uh, it's in regards to, you know, as we had discussed earlier, sometimes there's little gray areas in the regulations. So the ALZAD regulations, um, don't say that subdivision is not possible, right? Um, and what they are looking to do is a subdivision application for two weeks' lane, uh, but prior to submitting that, um, she submitted some correspondence as well as, uh, like a kind of a draft map, uh, for you guys to look at. Um, uh, staff has reviewed it. Um, I believe it would just be-
Do you pass that around for people?
Yeah. It should be in your packet.
It is, yep. Well-
Okay.
We just got the packet, so. It's in here somewhere. I don't know. There you go. You got it.
Okay.
Better than me. So this is in Alexander's Lake?
Yep, uh, two weeks' lane, uh, so, uh, southern part. Um, it's not part of the-
So what, what am I looking at? The, the two lots that, you got three, thirty-one. Which one wants to be split? Oh, Y C?
So two weeks' lane, it would be like a lot line adjustment and a split off of two weeks' lane. Um, we, we believe that it would be a subdivision, um-
I was going to ask, what's, what the, what the ALZAD regs say because I don't think we've ever had this.
So ALZAD regs don't mention subdivision. So like an overlay tends to put restrictions or, or opens up stuff for the, um, for that, for that zone. Um, there's no language in the overlay that says no subdivision. Um, they do have language about, um, uh, merging of lots. Uh, they talk about uses, changing the cottages over from seasonal to year-round. There's all that sorts of language involved with that, but some of the, like a good, for instance, would be underlying. You still have, if you're in a low density or rural development zone, whatever the underlying is, you, in theory, could still do agricultural uses, have backyard chickens, for instance. Uh, but it might not work for where you are near the lake, you know, for water quality, um, or where that's come up before. Who's the property owner? Who's the landlord? So a lot, a lot of the property, you have, um, uh, the, uh, the Sheridan's property and everything like that up there. Um, those properties, um, if they say no, that's, that's their own rules, like, uh, almost like a homeowners association, condominium, uh, association. That's pretty much how these are leased out. Uh, but there is owned, um, lots, uh, particularly on the southern end, uh, in this area. So, um, many of them have private ownership, uh, and provided they can meet the standards by which ALZAD requires, so that's seven thousand square feet, um, uh, and try to make the structures, uh, more conforming than what they are. Most of them on two weeks' lane, the, the individual cottage is our, our, uh, legal non-conforming, um, but, uh, we would want to see the proposed professional plan, you know, when it's all done, but, uh, this is just a draft, um, that they put together to just see if you guys have any questions.
So three thousand square foot is what's required by ALZAD? I thought you just said six thousand.
Uh, it's, it's whatever is on that. I don't have my paper in front of me.
All right, so it's three thousand here.
Yep, so it's three thousand, yep.
So splitting this bigger lot, I mean, without doing the math here, that, that is giving each lot three thousand?
So, um, it is splitting off number two from thirty point one, um, and the remaining, there's other six or seven, I think, um, uh, individual cottages that are still on thirty point one. It's not splitting them all up. It's just splitting off, uh, the one, the property owner.
So what you're saying is-
Yep.
If I'm reading this right, what you're saying is thirty point one-
Mm-hmm.
Outside of the red box.
Yep.
Is one structure and a garage. Is that what I'm seeing?
The-
On top.
So there's, uh, a cottage?
Outside of the red box.
Outside the red box? No, there are more structures. There's, there's, uh, like seven or eight cottages.
So is this land part of thirty point one?
And sheds. A portion of it would be thirty point one and then what, it'd be a lot line and a split.
So all of this belongs to thirty point one?
The top part, you can see that where it identifies eighty, eighty-three point three, the, and up is thirty point one. And below that is part of thirty. It's all the same property owner right now.
So thirty and thirty-one is owned by the same-
Same entities, yep.
Okay.
So what you're saying is you're taking a portion of land from each one of those lots?
Yep, and creating a new lot.
And creating this whole new lot.
Yep.
At eighty feet in frontage.
Uh, it would have to have, um, all the minimum requirements of, of ALZAD.
I'm just reading what's here, eighty feet, seventy-nine point two-five feet.
Uh, the minimum, hold on.
No, I'm just reading what this is saying.
Yep.
Yeah, seventy ma-
Trying to be clear what we're doing.
Oh, no, um, so tho- those footages are just existing footages, uh, from the GIS map-
All right.
That are called out, so.
Trying to be clear.
But I want to give you guys the correct answer in terms of, uh, the required. I don't memorize them all. Let's see. So ALZAD in terms of it doesn't have a minimum for a frontage. Um, it's more of the overall area, so.
Well, there's a lot of lots where you, you can't change what the frontage is. It's-
And, and most of them are on private roads.
Yeah.
Um, like this, this is private, um, uh, roadway, so, um, the, but, yep.
The two structures right here-
Yep.
Inside the box.
Yep.
Currently belong to this property.
Yes.
So that, that's a cabin and this is a cabin.
Mm-hmm.
Cabin, I'm sure.
Yep.
On this one whole lot.
Yes.
And you're trying to split it up into-
Yeah, so, so the one cabin in, could in theory be sold off to another entity, um, uh, with the land. Um, instead of, uh, just being the cottage and not having ownership of the land.
You have a better grip on the, except the regs say we can do it then?
I didn't see anything that said they couldn't, um, but I know this, um, could be, I don't know of other areas that maybe could have similar, um, you know, thoughts to it. I don't know if it would work anywhere else on the lake, uh, but it's, it's something I, I don't think I've seen an application for in, in the past, so.
I know we've never done it.
Yeah.
The most we've ever done over there is putting garages, allowing people to put garages across the street from each other.
So I, I can say on the staff end, we would look at it and if need be, we would reach out to legal if we get an application just to make sure that we're interpreting correctly because it's an overlay, um, district, um, but doing the subdivision. I don't see any issue of creating a, a new lot based off at least the overlays zoning.
Well, maybe that's the best idea at this point. Have somebody tell us it is legal to do.
Mm-hmm. Well, and if the commission wants us to reach out, we can reach out to the attorney with this exact one. Um, the, people are here too. I don't know if you had any questions for them or if you guys had anything to add?
I think you, someone said it was two cottages. It's a cottage and a garage.
Yeah, right.
Yep.
For the record?
Right. No, I think at this point, I think we understand what's going on, but I just don't know where we stand in all this, so I would-
Okay.
I would like to see before we move on in it.
Yeah, we don't have an application yet, but I can reach out, um, to legal counsel and just get an opinion on it.
Your legal department.
That's not a problem. And then once we get that, um, opinion back, I'll share that with you guys as well. Okay, yep.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the bench? Anything else on this section? Correspondence, Jonathan? No, if anybody got any questions?
No, I mean, Anne Marie included an article, um, from, from the bench, uh, and highlighted an area that, uh, or a portion of the section based off a recent court case. I just encourage you guys all to read through.
Zoning officers and zoning board appeals report. Inland wetlands reports.
Uh, I have no written reports for you. I'm here, uh, but the, uh, ZBA, um, did not meet. We didn't have a quorum, but the, we, the only real thing we were doing was organizational. Um, uh, inland wetlands, uh, we did meet. Uh, we had a few agent approvals for new houses and a couple, mainly residential, uh, projects, uh, being moved forward for site blocks.
Okay, economic development?
Good evening. I apologize for my tardiness. I was coming back from Boston. Traffic was a little heavy. Um, on June sixth, the EDC hosted the Northeast Commercial Real Estate Group, um, which met with the developer Parker Benjamin at one forty Main and they did a downtown tour. It was really valuable for the commercial agents to get an idea as to what we had going on downtown. Um, we had a ribbon cutting, um, on the ninth for Wicked Sinister Smokehouse, which is right behind, um, Danielson Surplus. Um, early indication is that he's doing well and, um, ultimately he'd like down the road to put a permanent fixture there. Um, the, um, we were awarded, um, a National Endowment of the Arts grant, um, called Our Town, and it's called Savadi. And it's a, a placemaking grant of capturing the hish- history of how the Laotians ended up here in Killenly. Um, and it's a great story that'll include a living documentary, a film, a couple murals and, um, a large musical instrument that'll be interactive, that'll be in the art park with the Brown.
I just have to ask a snarky question because I was on this commission, went all that and people were pretty hostile towards the newcomers. And I can remember there being warfare here as a consequence. And I just wonder, that's not happening anymore, right?
No, it's actually a lovely story that we should be proud of. I mean, it was change. Um, and, and I discovered, you know, by accident how it all happened through the O'Learys, um, sponsoring one family that ended up with over five hundred families. And now we're opening businesses for that second generation. Um, and they've made Killenly their home. So it's a, a celebratory story to be told, um, and they will be included in the art design and the documentary and the film, and it'll be, um, the documentary itself will be hosted at the, um, Historical Society because, you know, for future generations.
Wow. Wonderful. Because it really wasn't nice back then.
Times are changing. Um, and then, uh, Killenly was awarded an EPA multi-use grant. Um, that will be used for several brownfield parcels, um, with a focus on the old borough wastewater treatment, um, parcel and the Blueville Mill. Um, and part of that, there's a secondary grant. Um, we've been selected to participate in a, um, online portal called Citizens Lab that will, um, engage the residents of those neighborhoods around those mill sites.
Citizens what?
Citizens Lab.
Lab, L-A-B?
Correct. I'll be working with the Yukon TAB program, um, with that portal and it'll be interactive, um, historical, um, questions, concerns, and then when those sites get remediated, they'll have design and input, um, as to what they'd like their neighborhoods to look like.
What, what are they, uh, going to try to do with the Blueville Mill?
Um, right now it, we're just finishing up the phase two, um, on a prior EPA grant, um, to see what the cost assessment would be. Um, so this secondary, this other grant, the new one, will go towards the remediation of, eh, what needs to be done, what's left there.
Just getting rid of the contaminants?
Yeah, if there's lead paint, um, the water testing, all of that's happening now. Um, so we should have the results for that.
Little tanks.
One has been removed. There's some gaps in the information.
What, I mean, just recently?
No, back in the, uh, nineties.
No.
Yeah, yeah, there's some gaps in the information, hence the phase one, phase two work.
Okay.
Um, that is it.
Town council liaison, please?
Um, for June's meeting, um, June is, um, post-traumatic stress disorder awareness month and National Pollinator Month. There was a presentation by Any Edge LLC. They will be eventually coming to, um, the planning and zoning. Um, it's a proposed data center on the last parcel of land on Alexander Parkway. So, um, the first step was a host fee agreement in lieu of taxes that, um, that the town council approved. It's one of many steps.
Wait a second, what, what do we get in lieu of taxes from them?
Host, host fee agreement.
What does that mean?
So, um, it's an agreement between the town and the company to pay, um, money to the town each year. It's called the host fee agreement. I don't have the exact figures and-
Okay, I, I understand.
Like we did with the January.
Yeah, okay.
Thirty years.
Yeah, okay.
It's what they call it in the state statute. The state statute calls it, uh, host fee agreement.
Okay. Thank you.
So thirty-nine acres they're talking about, is that the piece where they had the contamination we were looking at? You were cleaning it up?
Yeah, and it also-
The rest pieces in tot- in its entirety is thirty-nine acres?
And, um, additional purchase of, uh, two parcels owned by a business owner. That was the host fee agreement. That was just the first step. Um, Teresa Barton, uh, was reappointed to the Historic District and, um, Renee Mazzarella to KB Ambulance. And, um, in the town manager's report, um, Jill already addressed the EPA, uh, multi-purpose grant. Um, the W, um, WPCA superintendent position is still open. Um, Mary's interviewing for, um, executive assistant, um, who, um, just left a few weeks ago for a new position. The assistant revenue, um, collector's position has- um, who, um, just left a few weeks ago for a new position, the assistant revenue, um, collector's position has been filled, um, an update on the Eddie Prey Reservoir Dam, the breach was, um, blocked by beavers.
Yeah, it is currently right now.
So, um, as the water levels are rising, um, the, it's still not safe to open up the road, um, we have a double A-plus credit rating with, um, standards poor, thank you, Mary. Um, KMS update, um, the, uh, Phase Two work is moving forward, um, ex, um, completion is expected in the fall of twenty twenty-four. Westfield Avenue is moving forward with, um, bits for the roof windows and the brickwork, and, um,
is that where the old high school was? Okay.
And. At the old, old school, um.
The old high school, not the.
The old.
Yeah, yeah, right, 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 right.
And, um, there's been a year, um, old on, um, eliminating the motor vehicle taxes from the municipal tax base. Oh, um, um, all of the, um, foreclosure, um, uh, foreclosures, uh, properties and the taxes that haven't been able to be collected, uh, those are gonna be moved forward, and they will be, they are, not that the taxes won't be collected if they find the, um, or are able to find the people that owe the taxes, those will be collected, but it's just to get them off the books. Such as motor vehicle taxes, if somebody hasn't paid them and they try to re, register motor vehicle in the state, it'll, it'll come back to them that they owe taxes in the county of Killenly. The early voting was approved, so there's, um, ten thousand five hundred in reimbursement for the state, but that still is up to, um, to see how much the actual cost will be, so there may, may be additional, um, reimbursement for that, it's, since it's the first time the, the voting, early voting's gonna happen. I think that's it.
Hey, can I motion to adjourn?
You got one.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.